Only part of the interstate that runs through Madison County. I was like, what is it, about a mile with that?
I felt really bad for the first responders.
Trying to crawl off.
Could've called one word, Paul, and he'd have it right out.
All right, I've got nine thirty. Case here for new bridge shirts for invocations today.
God, we just come before you. We thank you for who you are, that you are God, that you are holy, that you are sovereign, that you are in control. And nothing happens without your hand on it. So God, we ask that you give our supervisors wisdom. That they stick to what is true, that they love you and they love others most. And most of all, we thank you for Jesus, that he came and lived a life that we could never live, and took the punishment that we deserved, and he died and rose again, and anyone who calls upon the name of the Lord may be saved. So God, may we just seek you first. Now may we seek your wisdom, seek your truth. We just ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead him to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead and call our meeting to order. Can I have your little call please?
Present.
Here.
Bitch, here.
Here.
Call the present. Anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose? Hearing none, it asks for motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hartman had reports. Chip, you're up first. For once, I think you have good news.
First packet on here is the insurance report from a claim filed back in June. The claim started when I convinced Saint Paul South Park face broke out. So insurance company went around and checked all the buildings for hail damage. Highlighted the four areas due to my department. First day in the fog face. Since we've already done fog faces, I think moving forward, if I just try and reclaim, I would pay that out. The biggest one on here would be the roof of this building. And that package, I got you there for two bids that I submitted earlier. The insurance company is going to take the lower bid. So that pretty much would review the roof. This is on page four.
So we'll kind of end up a wash?
Yes.
So there's two that the prices, if I'm looking at this correctly, is quite a swing.
On the bids for the roof?
On the bids for the roof.
Yes.
Can they explain that? One's twelve thousand, one's thirty-eight thousand.
That's not the roof.
That's not the roof.
That's money that you work.
Okay, that's what I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
The bids for the roof is one was one forty-eight, another was one twenty.
Yeah.
And the insurance is going to cover, it's covered one twenty.
Okay, all right.
So the one twenty is taking it all off and starting over?
Yes, and that's, we discussed, that's the bid was in going originally anyways. It was a little more depth. Uh, the other is the roof on the garage over here in the parking lot. And I have got the bids. Moving forward, if you want some bids, we could.
It's just a big asphalt roof.
Does it bleed?
And the other was public health, but it was just some minor something. But moving forward, if you want to do this with the roof here, do we need a resolution? Move forward with that or?
Probably so, given how. I would say so.
Bids probably see, probably best practice.
Yeah, let's have a listen.
Uh, do you want me to get bids for the garage roof or the public health?
Do you, do you feel the garage roof needs replaced? Is it, is it there?
Well, John got up there, I didn't get up there.
So do you want to reach out to the same companies that gave the bid for the?
They're probably different.
Different groups.
Different style. Maybe one's asphalt, one's.
Right, but.
If you'd like me to get a couple bids from the contractors that.
Wait, wait, it should be pretty easy. I don't have a value on that thing or anything.
Would you put a tasteful steel roof on that?
You can get a bid anyway, see if they got.
Maybe, and it needs siding.
Yeah, it needs siding, that's a discussion of yours past.
Worse than the roof, doesn't the siding need replaced?
Yeah.
Maybe just work on the thing that's the most.
The ones with insured loss, the siding's not.
Right, so most of the insured loss, allow, and then if you do the roof first, then look at the siding next.
So you want to proceed with the resolution for this?
Yeah, let's do that, let's get that. It's probably going to be a spring project anyway at this point, is it not?
I'm a bridge object contractor, I'd see you in most likely.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the.
Okay, then there are back items on, a packet, we have two packets from Steve and Cody Reed. Bids for the archway and the line at Honeymoon Park. I was hoping moving forward, since insurance is working on covering this roof, and it's going to use the MARBA funds to possibly do this roof, and then we can use the MARBA funds and take care of those two bids at the Honeymoon Park.
Something we need to do before year end.
We've discussed the monument for seventy years now.
We have, we've done that.
We're talking about, I'm talking about the European money.
We need to start meeting about that.
We've now finally, we've paid out the courthouse stuff. Need to make sure Steve doesn't have any needs there to wreck his, his project up, and then see what's left, and then this direction on it has to be made by this year. It doesn't have to be done through two years, correct?
I believe it's in the twenty-sixth. We have to get that in this year, and we have to.
I think so.
Yes.
So.
The archway isn't answered.
I am.
And we've been talking about it for seven weeks.
I think we need to move forward.
So let's, let's put these on the, on the stack. Um, Shelley and I talked about that too, with the need to, okay, we had X amount of dollars left, and we got to allocate within year, so.
Did we only get one bid for this though?
The stone work over there, yes.
I don't know.
There's not any, that's Steve and Cody, they're master masons, they've done all our work for us in the past, it's some, it would delay the process.
It's not, I'm not saying that they're not, I'm just wondering if it would be new bus to get multiple bids.
And they built the archway.
Yeah, they do. Oh, they built the archway.
And I'm not sure you could get other bids, it would be from far away. There aren't a lot of students.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but this is, this is a good amount of money, and I'm thinking, just to make sure we're able to do it, it's going to get multiple bids.
You can try if you can put the word out.
Would you, would you mind, if the board is okay with that, would you mind?
Same way I can find.
Seeing if we get a couple more bids? Just to make sure that we're in our due diligence.
All right. Anything else, Chip?
That's it.
Thank you.
Mike. All right. Tell us about right-of-way fence report group, how we determine all those.
Oh boy. I'm gonna, this, I got a lot of paper here, so can everybody hear me? Is that all right if I just, all right? So as you know, we have some bigger bridge projects in the pipeline. As we get closer to final design, then we need to purchase additional right-of-ways. We follow all federal and state guidelines when we have to acquire a right-of-way. This resolution that I'm bringing you today is part of this process. Most, all of our right-of-ways are what they consider minor purchases, so like a lot of times, we're just buying maybe a hundred, or maybe two hundreds, or a couple of tens of acres, it's, it's five more feet. It's not, it's not a complicated right-of-way, or we are displacing people, or houses or buildings or anything, very simple. As part of this right-of-way process, federal government and state allows us to do a, what they call a compensation estimate. And that's part of this resolution. Compensation estimate for minor right-of-way purchases are based on your assessed value of your land. And so what would be an assessor's office? And as part of this report that I sent to you, which is over a hundred pages, is the process of the Secretary of Road Department going through and getting the market, current market value of what the land is based on your assessment of your property.
I didn't understand. If you need to put in a bridge, and you're really not going to take any of my land, but you need to maybe put soil on me or equipment, do you have to pay me to use that?
Uh, yes, we, if it's a temporary easement, you still have rights, we have, we have to follow your rights and negotiate what the temporary, what the rent would be for the time being, for us to do that type of thing. So that's all part of this. Going back to the factors that are presented here, our, you know, assessment value doesn't necessarily represent today's market value, so that's what these factors are. So this, the reports in here, the information gathered, it's lands.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Well, there's the joke for the day.
You did get everybody to laugh.
Yeah, I got everybody to laugh. So where was I? Back to the factors. We go through the sales in the last year of ground in Madison County, we look at the different property groups, whether it's agriculture, or maybe pasture, or those type of things. We get a factor, and that's why if you see on the resolution, there's two groups. Group one is more tillable land, and group two is more of a pasture type stuff. Uh, the other thing is residential property. Residential property is a little different, it needs to be within ten percent. Our assessor, you know, on residential property has those residential properties. At ten percent, so the factor on there is one point one, so. The other thing we look at too is replacement fence patterns. We seek out the local supplies of what it would do to build a fence, and have some lists of different types of fence that are also in this resolution. I could go on for a long time if you want me to. Any questions on this report?
Do you guys build the fence, or do you hire?
On this one here, we pay for replacement. So let's say, for example, we've got a bridge project, and we need an additional five-foot right-of-way to be able to construct the bridge, and the permanent right-of-way. Then we would pay them replacement cost for their fence based on the schedule. And then we'd also pay them for their land, for the easement for them.
What if I have a really crummy three-stand barb in its midst?
This is, this is replacement cost for.
So I, you would replace it with a three-stand? I couldn't ask you for.
No. That's why it's kind of listed here, if you look there. We have a far, five bar, forty-seven, thirty-nine, thirty-two, are the common fences. We do sometimes negotiate additional corners and braces, because if there's an angle or something, we're necessarily in the standard for that. That's, that's what I have to report on, on that one.
So is this the report that you require to do?
Yeah, yeah, we have to have this on file, so when we do go to the process of buying right-of-way, it's a public document. This is how we.
It was kind of skewed, it was based off the assessed land evaluation, because assessed value is a farm ground, or way below market.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why, that's why.
Multiple is really what changes.
Yeah, that multiple is what changes this.
So if I contest, and I say you're not giving me enough, then that goes before that board, and then they would.
So, uh, not to go into that whole process, but if, if, if a person is not happy with the, how would I say, assessment value that we have right here, then it could go a full-blown assessment where we would hire an assessor for right-of-way purposes, which is a longer process. They have, they have rights to request that pretty much. So that's why it's important for us to get our offer as close to possible as it would be. And it's just a little different, there's, it's a specialty, right-of-way assessing is a little different. If you think about when you buy a barn, you're buying everything. You're buying whatever buildings it has on it, the ground, the resources under the ground, the fences, whatever value the total property is. When we purchase right-of-way, we break it down into pieces. That's why you see land, dirt at one price, fence at another price. Again, if this is a building taking or something like that, that's a complicated process. We would hire an assessor to do that. We don't have to be on the center table.
In your opinion, do you think these align with what it, what it actually costs and values are now?
Yeah, I think it's right on the line.
All right, thanks Mike. Can you talk about bridge closure?
Yeah, yeah. As I told a couple times in previous meetings, our structure, and it isn't just Madison County, it's the whole state of Iowa, our structures are a few old, and as we go forward in time here, we're going to see more and more of these. If you want to scroll down to the pictures. This happens to be a level B road, so it doesn't get traveled quite as much, so I'll have you go to the picture. So if you look to the right-hand, or my right-hand side, or the right-hand of the screen, we have an abutment failure. This area here has a lot of rock, and what's happened is over time, streams corroded, and the abutment, the tips of the pile are starting to tip outwards, and that whole area right there is extremely unstable. You can also see, uh, kind of up in the, what I would call the stringers, or you see where the handrail, the stringers have cracked, and they have failed.
And this is a level B road?
This is not a level B road. All right, go to the next one, just kind of show just some stuff, that was again, that may be, maybe the button has. Next one, please. The pile are actually in pretty good shape, however, they slid out away from its foundation, and boom, they're gone. It's not repairable. Excellent, please. When I talk about the stringers, or this would be the supports that go between the two buttons, they're rotten. If you can look at, there, see the white, white colored areas, and kind of the darker areas? That is basically decayed rock and wood, and they have become structurally deficient.
When was this constructed?
Uh, I believe the original bridge, it's eighty-nine years old. We went out and worked on it several times over the last eighty-nine years. It's just to the point where.
And it looks like it's a hundred percent wood.
It's a hundred percent wood.
What's the traffic count on it?
It's a level B, I don't, not, not pretty much. We actually, when, I had force to close it off, I was worried about somebody crossing it. We went out and we went to both sides of this level B road, and did a little bit of glading, and actually had to take those route. There's one landowner on one side. He can get in from the other side now. This is on two hundred and sixty-fifth street, where this is at. So the landowners have access, they just won't be able to cross the bridge.
Were you in monetary?
No, that's a wait.
Yeah, no, no. Excellent, please.
And then you can see, it's just in bad shape.
Do you take that out, just to avoid future issues?
Uh, we, we'd like to for now, we're so late in our construction season, we have a lot of checklist stuff to, to get done. What goes up there is a permanent, what we call a permanent enclosure. We, uh, put a series of heavy posts in front of it, mark it with a closure, donation. And there's some things for me, you have to work really hard to get across to them. That's what we.
So you'll fix it so they can't?
It's that way, right.
Could they even get a four-wheeler around it?
Uh, people do some weird stuff, that they're going to have to work very hard to get that done, but we've had people do some things before that. Not that it's a hundred percent, but we've done what we need to do as far as meeting our guidelines and standards to say they're as close.
Thanks for the good, Mike, definitely helps.
Yep.
All right, do you have anything, anything else?
I just, you know, we are receiving a lot of dust, just like everybody else.
Did the calcium get?
It's not down yet.
All right, you're good, thanks, Mike. Okay, we've reached the public comment portion of the agenda. Does anyone from the public push to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Ryan, you're up next.
So, updates on existing items. We have that Federal Housing Loan Bank on, for condos on fifteenth. We've yet to see any action on that at all. I mean, that went in, in the April. We're still waiting on the Federal Housing Bank to make that decision, I'll work right after this time. Other three world internet projects are posting ahead for 2025. Madison County Development Group, our revolving loan fund, we have five current loans, one that bought ounces in the last month, and the one pending in Earlone. Subtracting the funds that would go to the one pending in Earlone, we've got thirty-seven thousand available to businesses at three percent pretend. Uh, we have the four Farmers Electric revolving loan funds. Those are all approved, but then we started digging into it down, and they were being kind of hokey about paying out, so we kind of wrote her on them. We got two of those closed up on Friday, so there's one left of the four, and they're mostly deciding whether or not they're going to build a building, or they're going to buy another building that's pre-existing, so they're kind of, it's on them to get that money moving. On that CCOG equipment loan, we did finally get an offer letter for the two hundred and fifty K in equipment. Uh, the question there is, uh, got a little janky, so ended up being like three of them. So I don't know if the, the link, if the, if the business will want to go through with that or not. We're still waiting to hear back from them. I'll probably tap in with them today just to see what they're thinking. I'd like to get that button ducked here by the end of the month for that CCOG with the loan. That's a four-point-five percent, it's a seven-year loan. Uh, let's see, other stuff. We have been trying to aggregate interest in, into developments, so like what we'll do is we'll or find homes for them, so we'll have people who have ideas or looking for certain sites, and we'll try to carry those up when it was available, or if it's something that doesn't exist, we may try to, try to rather do a developer, who has an idea for a site, build out, saying they want at least a spot, or they want to own a stall in the building. So we have to continue to work with that. We did, uh, we did resurrect a cold, kind of a cold leap from last year, that Tom had, and we've had a really good ongoing conversation that would be a pretty good development if that, if that one goes through. But we put, when I, we thought this was when I set that on their radar, so. On the community foundation side, the board recruitment is ongoing. We have four openings this year, we'll have four openings next year. I think we're good on new winter set applicants, so we're trying to get a few more spread out around the county for this coming, for the four that are open now. And we're trying to stack the bets, so we have a good number of applicants to next year when the next four roll off. For those who don't know, those are ninety, those are three, they have three-year terms, they can deal up to nine years, and then they have to take a mandatory year of, of siesta. So, before they can ask to come back on. On the cemetery fund, Worthington is done. Viney is almost done, they just need to come back and tighten the back fence on Viney. Moon was, uh, was approved, to do twenty-three stones. We've got sixty-eight thousand, or six thousand eight hundred dollars left there, and we have had conversations with Fairview Cemetery up on the highway to do some stone work up there. And we'll, we'll, this is, now that the bridge festival's over, we'll do a press release, you know, about what that fund's doing, considering we can raise some additional funds. Might just have that fund debt of over fifteen thousand for, for next year. I think it's doing what it's supposed to do, and pretty happy.
The cemetery?
The cemetery, yeah, we might get to back up around fifteen thousand, because we're going to another season, because that's, that's not enough to do about four, five projects. I'm pretty happy with how that's going. Uh, we did step in to help the Madison County Cover Bridge Association with, with fundraising, we did, uh, together a new fund for them, so the lead had the ability to, one, better track it, it's not systemic, and Mike has to keep track of it. He doesn't need money coming into the office, we can manage that way better, and with less, you know, scrutiny and stuff. So we, we had that fund set up, it can do even online donations. We've, uh, so far, we've raised about five thousand dollars, a little over five thousand dollars on that. That's what we have.
I do have a question.
Here.
You said we had a discussion with a developer. Is it two out-of-town developers, the two different ones you had discussions with, or is it the same?
I have, so, I have two out-of-town developers that we are working on project. One of them will probably happen. Uh, that is probably a matter of helping to figure out what the financing package looks like. That project has ballooned over two million dollars, it's a commercial, so it's going to be a pretty expensive build, so we're going to try to get in there and figure out how we can, how we can make that to be a more manageable buy for that business, doing that significant expansion, and that's a local business looking to be building that building.
Is that in winter set, or?
Uh, it will be in winter set, yeah.
Within the city limits, or outside?
It will be, the, the new building will be with you.
Okay.
So that's, we're trying to figure out what we can do, not just dip, but what, you know, can we do revolving loan funds, can we, can we use CCOG for equipment, can we, you know? There's a lot of tools we can, can do, and if we're looking at spring construction, at times, we try to bring those tools to bear.
And the other developer, is that a housing, or is that?
That's commercial as well.
That's commercial as well, okay.
Yeah, so we'll see where that goes. That's, it's a little more speculative, but they have pockets.
Is that also within winter set?
That would probably be within, I'd say yes, yeah. Uh, they will just, they will pay what they have to pay, probably, it's a, for that kind of business.
Ryan, have you ever discussed, um, cemetery tours of these really old cemeteries?
You know, that's never.
They do paid ones in Boston, and then that preserves, and it's, it's really, really interesting.
You know, I could talk to the sort preservation, not, not sort preservation, I'm thinking the genealogical society is probably the best fit to have a conversation with us, is see what, what they say, if that's something they're even.
I think.
Are there some appetite for that or not? I don't know. So we work with them on the cemetery fund for, uh, if you have a, so if you're a cemetery board, you're not a five oh one C three, you're a five oh one C thirteen, I think, and so we can't give the money directly to them, so we get to the genealogical society, that they funnel it to the specific cemeteries, so we've got arrangement with them, worked out already, so. That's a logical group for us to touch in.
Just a thought.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
All right, anything else for Ryan?
Appreciate it.
All right, very good. Thanks, Ryan. Uh, next we have Nick Steinbach from the Heartland Club.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, what we're here for is part of our application process with a proposed anhydrous expansion. The Department of Ag and Land and Storage Ship requires us to get in front of you folks to give your approval, your consent for the expansion project. There are certain criteria that we need to meet with IDALS in doing that, and I've got two pieces of paper here that they have site requirements, as far as spacing, that we need to have as far as residential occupancy, roads, railways, stuff like that, so. The first page I got, where they have two pictures on it, that is two of the IDALS requirements that they ask us to meet. So when you're looking at it, um, top right-hand corner, the legend from the Google Earth shows, uh, how many feet we are from our proposed, the, the site expansion to the road. The IDALS requirement is fifty feet, and obviously, according to where we're looking to put the, the anhydrous tanks, it's a hundred and seven feet, so we're meeting that requirement. And then the portion number two there on the bottom, um, resident, residential occupancy. I didn't know if that was a house there or not, um, to the west of the facility, but, uh, we're five hundred and eighty-seven feet from there, and IDALS requirement for residential occupancy is four hundred and fifty feet.
I think that's commercial, it's pretty well, that's different.
Anyway, so yes, so.
So you're way farther.
Yes, according to the IDALS, you know, and I've been in contact with Ryan, um, here, I believe his last name is Holger? Yep, okay. And he asked me to get in front of you guys to bring this proposal to, and I think we may be meaning to do something as far as if it, whether it meets what the, the board, you know, what the zoning board needs.
How many gallons do you have on this, like presently?
Presently?
It's a twelve-thousand gallon tank, so.
So you're going to add three more?
Yes.
Twelve thousand each gallon?
No, there'll be thirty thousand gallon tanks.
Times three.
Yeah. We are, if you haven't heard, I think there's been some scum in Winter Set, we just purchased B B E P. They do have a site north of town that we have to move, um, that, what they had is pulling out there, and that would be one of the bullets that would have gotten down into this facility, so.
Explain that again, so you're going to take.
So we purchased B B E P, actually officially, yesterday was the official day, and we have certain days that we have to have that been moved by. There's bullets, there's a thirty thousand gallon bullet sitting up north of town here that we had.
So anyway, so what IDALS request us to do is to get in front of you guys, get, you know, and, and to present what we need to present, and then obviously, Ryan, if we need to have a discussion on what we need to do.
I'll just work through permitting process and, and make sure that all of our zoning ordinance is compliant with location. If there's any more specific than IDALS, we'll address that.
Do we need a resolution?
I think it's favorable approval, which follows the guidelines, right?
Yeah.
Just an update to the.
It's, it's more notification to you guys.
Oh, federation.
All right. Well, thank you for your investment in Madison County. Well, thank you for your investment in Madison County.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to our resolutions today. Our first one's emergency management resolution. Big Mitch Johnson is the E M coordinator, question number eight. Andy, sir, from that board, do you have anything you want to share?
I was going to do my report, but I'll do it here. We had really good applications, I think eighteen, we had, we narrowed it down to six on a Monday, and then we invited them all in, interviewed six of them on Thursday. We were all pretty unanimous and chose the one offering the job that, right after, I think Sheriff Barnes did, and, yes, and he accepted her.
He tells, will do mine?
He's got his expertise.
He's a, he's the health and safety, or he did the health and safety for Fort Dodge Laboratories up in Fort Dodge, that's their big thing up there. Lives in Manson, Iowa, has been with that company for like seven years, I believe. Before that, he was with, I'd have to look at his app.
His expertise was quality control and animal science, it's very secure, and his wife got a job in Des Moines, so they need to move closer.
Okay, so they're going to be moving to Minnesota?
Yes, they know that, and they're more than, we gave them four to six months to relocate.
Okay.
And that's an agreement.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, glad you have excellent candidates for that.
We did.
Would you, would you mind sending us the, his resume or whatever, or just sending all the?
Yeah, HR can do that.
That would be great.
Okay. Can I have motion approved?
So.
Motion by Diane, service that.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if that's, needs to be an issue or not.
It says November eighth on the, for certainly.
He's the one, no, he, yeah, he was hoping, he was hoping, see if he could move it to the eleventh, but following, after the weekend.
November eleventh?
Yeah.
I know she, uh, I didn't change that.
She had any change that.
I, eleven, eleven?
Yeah, and I'll get him, I'll get him to inter, I'll have him meet with you guys here soon, we get him down here.
All right, great. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
We have a second.
What's that?
We're waiting for you to second.
Oh, I said.
Okay, thank you. Then all the discussion, all in favor indicate by saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, motion carries, all right. Public health approving Madison County Public Health Agency offer annual influenza immunizations to county employees. We've done this for several years, Susan, do you have anything else that, anything to add?
No.
Once it's approved, you set some dates and.
Yes.
How, can you explain how that works with more county managing, will they just come out here and offer it, and schedule dates, or how does that happen?
We already set a date, if it's approved, it'll be Wednesday, October 20th, then they will come here, they will go to secondary roads first, then here at the annex, and then they'll be out public health.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Excellent. Can I have motion approved?
Same.
Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Next, the secondary roads resolution, approving right-of-way land and fence reports, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Hundred page down here will be the next resolution.
Yes.
Next, we have a secondary roads resolution approving bridge closure effective October twenty-second, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. I was kidding about the. Next, one on YouTube, he has a teak order, he's a full-time welder mechanic, fuel person effective October twenty-eighth, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? Other than it's confusing, it says teak order, it says end order.
Yeah.
That said, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Next, is our secondary roads resolution, approving work agreement on MR two D with MR two D, if they'd like to work here. Anything to add on that, Mike?
We're, we're getting that up in advance, and it's probably not so.
Is that the patching item coming? Is that different?
Yes.
So you just need our approval, so you can go forward?
Yes. All right, got motion approved. Motion by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Heather, any further discussion?
Yeah.
If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. All right, now we have the weed commissioners' twenty-four annual report. Matt, anything you want to highlight on that?
Oh, pretty much the same as last couple of years, a little more brush and spray and stuff this year, just trying some things, getting our, getting much of the kind of line of, outfit.
It's like, and it looks like you've had several conversations, but as far as official notices, you didn't have to do.
Yeah, I tried to do more.
Informal communication?
Informal communication, it seems to work a lot better.
Probably received a lot better than getting certified meals.
Yeah, yeah, actually, post offices aren't very good with the certified mail either, so.
So usually, when you call them, they're probably embarrassed and they just fix it?
Some, yeah, some, some are expecting the call.
I know, I know. Okay. That said, have motion approved the weed commissioners' report.
So.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Diane, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. This item is a motion to approve the application for the annual liquor and wine license for Pepper Arrow Farms, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Oh, that's okay, you go ahead, so, I'll be second.
Motion by Diane, second by Heather, any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Other business, board member reports, anyone have anything to report on?
Uh, yeah. I read you're confusing the Iowa Workforce, yeah. Okay, so Iowa Workforce, they are updating their twenty-eighty agreement, and I sent you a bullet, bullet point list of the changes. The most significant one is they're moving from, as you know, we're held liable if there's any issues in county, but they're moving from a equally shared portion to a per capita portion, which actually is inefficient to us.
Fair.
It's a lot more fair, so I like that. And then also, other major thing is that they're moving to a administrator, they're hiring administrative, like administrative administrator, it's currently called county, that they're, they're going to hire their party to meet a bit.
Really?
Yes, so they put that out to bid, and this one came back as the best, and that's our confirmation. So they want to take action on this in November, I leave this the twenty-second, so we're sending it out to you guys, and Matt, I'm glad you're here, because I'm going to forward that twenty, I don't have your own dated email, but I was going to forward that twenty amendment to you for you to review. The Iowa Workforce has asked that our county attorney review, so you guys can take your time to digest it.
So once it's recommended formally by Iowa Workforce?
This is what's recommended formally.
Is it, do we have to approve the twenty-eighty?
Yes, we have to approve as a forward to the twenty-eighty amendment.
So if you bring it to board their next meeting?
So the major changes outside, would you share?
That's the main change, and then the other two, the moving from the equally shared liability to per capita. I think those are the two, the main, main ones that could change, there's some other little changes too, and then I also sent you the red lines, so you can see what's changed.
They weren't significant, the other changes, so.
Most of them were just housekeeping, but those were the main ones. And because they, they, the board requested that we get approval for the county's ways, that's one of those having to follow it, so if they want to review it, I'm just going to.
Yeah, if you go into Outlook, I think there's a general county attorney email, I think I might even have one.
Okay.
Tiffany and Sam will get it.
Okay.
So do you want her to just send it to Tiffany first?
Doesn't matter, please, either way, you can send it.
Okay. So that's the update on that. Also, I don't know if you guys got an email, I, I went to the ISAC webinar for their legislative priorities and voting, for voting on what they want their legislative priority to be. You guys probably got an email from ISAC discussing that, that's about all. I also attended the Broadman Seminar, they call it the Bead Seminar, for people looking to get grants for a Broadman expansion, that was an interesting seminar. Regarding our, and I can update this regarding the comprehensive plan, but I had a couple calls with, a couple emails, conversations with our consultant, he's finalizing the changes to, requested changes, should have it finalized by the end of the week, he's also penciled in eleven, twelve for our public hearing, so I don't know how you guys want to proceed for that, we can talk about that, we can get that, that on the agenda if we want to, our next meeting.
Let's get it scheduled if we can.
Did, did, we have the resolution set in date in our next meeting?
Well, our next meeting is November.
Let's do it, November twelfth.
November twelfth.
Remember, is it the twelfth or the?
The eleventh is a Monday, so I'm pretty sure it's the twelfth.
Yes, the twelfth. So if we want to do that, we can, you know, have a resolution to do that at our.
November twelfth is our next meeting.
Oh, so we need to do, so we need to have a special meeting then to set the date.
I think maybe we should, I'd like to get that thing knocked out. So, well, you know whether twenty-ninth, whether that can.
He promised we'll have the update by the end of this week, and as soon as I get it, I'll send it to you. So maybe Monday, you know party, we maybe can do a meeting, just to.
Let's just do it at our regular, twenty-ninth of October, if that can happen.
Yeah.
Does that give us that allocation?
We don't have any of that.
I know, we have a special.
You're there.
Does that give us another time?
It's not rest in ten, it has one and twenty.
It does. It does.
So, well, you have everything pretty much, and we're going to be so.
Correct. It'll be in their hands, and I'll call it if I need.
We'll trigger, yeah.
So do we want to set it at ten o'clock on the panel?
At three, three o'clock, either one, it'll be, it'll be quick.
Five, not even five, okay. So that's the, my.
Okay, Sam.
As I said, we met with the commission to pay the mandates for our deal stuff. I did, I met with the landlords concerning the thousand acres, and that is moving forward quickly now. We have an agreement to turn that over to Iowa Natural Heritage, and that's been really a positive, and I think maybe we'll get closer. I did come and do tours for the courthouse on Green Bridge Festival, and had a lot of wonderful help, Diane Lair and Chip did a lot, and Joe Mesa, it was incredibly positive, and we are trying to encourage, we'd like to set tours for the little people in our own schools, because when, if Chip, if you allow them to go up high, people are absolutely fascinated.
It's fascinating, and it's pretty dangerous.
It's, it's the people who, who are healthy and strong will go up, and the others say, eh, I'm not going to try it.
I see our insurance agent's back row.
Yeah.
Have you been up there yourself, Tom?
Yes, I have.
Okay, I probably wouldn't advise the general public if you go down.
Uh, you know, I wouldn't.
We haven't had any issues, and people love it, so that was a really fun time, and such positive, you know, comment. And they thanked us, that we have.
It was, it was really neat to see the Bridge Festival on the fully completed courthouse.
It really was, and they all, it was fun, and they were eating lunch on the grass and all over.
The ramp was a great place too, my wife always slept there.
It was.
That was a bench.
It was, and people just said, oh, it was a real positive.
Excellent. I have a couple meetings on Thursday at Herta and CACS, it'll be interesting to see where the CACS is, by now, the RFP has been submitted, and find out more when we expect to hear back on that. Michelle, you had a report in there?
Just an update of the things that occurred while I was gone, and that I come in, cluttered in the.
Excellent.
I love it that you did it that little week on the end. Yeah, thank you, that was.
Old business, any old business? New business, sidewalks that might email for. I suppose facing numbers this week.
The sidewalk, we had.
I got the porch of, of all over Cover Bridge Festival, sounds like sidewalk, it is a little, which they probably have on very. Okay, so it's just a repair, like a repair of squares?
Of squares.
Is it on the interior sidewalk, or exterior sidewalk?
It is, and I was at Farmers Market. It needs to be fixed.
All right. Resignation of weed commissioner, Matt, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
You've done an admirable job for the last three years, I appreciate that.
Are we going to post that then, soon, or wait till spring? Are we required to have somebody else?
It's, it's your.
That's your. Mike, your perspective, how was that in secondary roads, did that seem to work?
It worked, because Matt made it work. He had some extra seals that were very useful. It's, we got very lucky to be able to get somebody that could fill kind of those things. Going forward, you know, if that would be nice, but I don't know if you're going to find that exact person.
Should we post for that, or post options?
Well, the, the weed commissioner technically is, falls under.
Give me.
It could probably be a good idea to, to start seeking that out. Matt, you're the expert there, I believe you did December, is it December, there's reporting?
I, the report I just did today, I'll submit that to the state Iowa.
Really, for, calendar year twenty-four, it's, yeah.
Yes, as far as new weed commissioner, March, April timeframe, there, there's a form I'll have ready for you guys for that. Yeah, and then, like, like I said, my, if there's any questions or any, need to help, point anybody in the direction, I hundred percent.
So we need somebody hired by March?
I would say it'd be a good idea to get somebody lined up by the first of the year.
If you've got, yeah, see what's out there.
And again, I'm not there for, but there's possible courses and classes that need to be taken.
Yeah, I saw that, right there at the first of the year, so I recommend trying to get, get advertised.
Is sharing with you, is secondary roads, that portion of work good?
It did, because we found the right person, so that's.
Matt, is there any issues, we do not have one right now, legally?
No, you, you don't need them, as long as I get the report to the, to the state, which is waiting to be signed, and then I can, I can submit that by the first of December, and so we're good.
But the new hire has to have a lot of certification in past classes, so.
Category six on their spray license for right-of-way, or I think, A in, in the IDALS testing, which is herbicide spraying on private lands, but I can get more of that information, I'll go from, Blaine Cozler, our state weed commissioner.
So we do not have any legal risk, we not have anyone currently on staff named right now?
Correct, correct, but I wouldn't wait, because especially if you're trying to find the right person, you might as well publish and get things rolling.
Can I, I would suggest the same thing, I, I'll work with Cal, HR, whoever, yeah.
Let's get it, let's get it.
Pack it together, let's get somebody in, have a goal, have somebody hired, so they're here January one, so they'll cover that year.
Let's get somebody in and have a goal to have somebody hired so they're here January 1st, so they're covered that year.
Can we seek another Matt that can do something for you and?
Well, that would be obvious, yes.
You can put that in the job description as it's posted. If you don't find the right person that works, you can change the job description, repost it and, and go a different direction. We're in a non-secondary roads. But I would post it as, as if they are, have it in the job description as it currently is. And then, see what candidates you get. If you find the right person that, you know, works with Mike and makes things work, then great. If you don't, you've got enough time where you can post with a different job description and, and go in a different direction.
Somebody in there by spring.
Correct.
Worst case scenario.
You, you have to because we don't want to deal with what we've dealt with in the past.
So, worst case scenario, what happens if you do not find the right candidate at all?
Well, who can at least do the weed commissioner job? You'll, you'll deal with the next county attorney.
It won't be less.
Does the county receive fundies? Mike, you might have this. Iowa, the roadway trust fund for portions of that position?
There is what I would call reimbursement funds for receipts. Well, it's, it's a small number. It has to be at every place. We don't have all the right places. It's just we're basically returning. That will be a budget item, I'm sure, before the tour. I still think it's a good idea just to get on that.
Yeah, I think so too. Let's get started on that. And you could use another.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get on.
Good, thanks.
All right. John, you want to tell us about the unique situation you recently ran into?
So, we recently at the last renewal added two one-room schoolhouses, basically what they are, from Scott Township to Lee Township. Didn't think it was an issue. ICAP's fine with it adding buildings. We already extend liability for all of the townships. But the review that the reinsurer did found that the buildings are actually in the township's name. It said the county does not have an insurable interest in those two buildings. And so, we need to put together something. The easiest answer, working with Matt with it, is putting together a lease between us and the township so that it shows that we are responsible, the county is responsible for maintaining the insurance on those buildings.
And one of the townships just made a fairly significant investment.
Correct, right, right.
And we own those buildings?
The township.
Townships.
The accessory shows that it's the township's owning. And, you know, they're the deeded owner of those buildings.
Is there a reason why they can't put insurance on it?
They, one of them had insurance on it before. I can't remember honestly if they had lost it or we could talk. A lot of it's okay to just add it to ours. It's less expensive to add it to the county's. And again, didn't think it's an issue until the reinsurers got involved.
So, the county has to put the insurance on it? Is that what?
They, they don't, they don't have to. We did, ICAP said, thought that it was not an issue just to add those. We would bill the townships for their, for the portion that, you know, for those buildings.
Because it's deeded to them, we can't do this.
Correct. The reinsurers came back and told ICAP, hey, you know, they don't have an insurable interest. The county doesn't. So, there wouldn't be coverage extended to those buildings.
So, the solution is to drop a lease to, we're leasing these two schoolhouses. And then we could put insurance on it.
Correct.
And then we can bill the townships for that insurance.
Correct. Correct. And it's kind of a lease, a lease and then a lease sort of thing. So, they can use it, you know, but we're responsible for it. It's just, Matt would be able to explain that piece of better than I could.
It's either that or a 2080 agreement. And I, and I'm kind of leaning towards 2080 agreement. But the, the fact matter is, you know, the trustees have their own, or each township has its own little portion of the levy. And so, we don't, you know, it's cheaper for taxpayers all around, for county to just, to get them under our umbrella. These building under our umbrella and just build them back. For them to buy it on their own to get insurance would be much more expensive. So, if there's, I, I mean, the lease agreement's certainly a way to do it where we can lease it for a dollar. And, but I, I don't know. I've got to look at it a little deeper. I just was made aware of this yesterday and thinking about it and I talked to John this morning. I'm not so sure 2080 agreement might not be better and just have it go in perpetuity. But I'll, I'll work on it as whatever's, figure it out. Where's easiest for me?
And wouldn't the 2080 be cleaner?
Not necessarily. I, I just need to look at it. I, I, I think so, but I don't want to say without looking at a couple of things.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Communication, if a person's not hired or appointed for positions, I've never met you.
This is between Kelly and I. When we have all these boards and they interview people, sometimes the applicants don't receive any kind of letter, any kind of notification. They don't know if they've gotten the job. I think there needs to be continuity across this county or some professionalism thanking me for applying. And I'm sorry to regret that you didn't get the job or keep your application on file.
Sometimes they, you don't get a flush letter.
They get nothing. And it's, it doesn't feel good to Kelly because it's, and we need to be consistent on every single department that they treat people with some courtesy. And I have, I think that I would much rather see not these board chairs or anybody on the board call and set up the meetings. It needs to go through Kelly and it needs, Kelly needs to be present because what we're getting is we're not, the board might choose six people and then one is substituted for someone else. I don't think we need to do that.
I think the chairs would be open to having that managed.
Yes.
By our HR.
I'm just talking about standardized.
I am.
Thank you for your interest in this position.
But we're not doing it. The boards are not doing it. And I think that needs to be correct.
So, Kelly, have you reached out to all the board chairs? Are they okay with that?
I had that, yes.
She was waiting. Okay, I'm okay with that.
I think that's, that's just.
I think they'd welcome having that burden taken off their shoulders.
I understand. I'm just, how can we help?
I think you can offer it, but you can't force it that way.
Right, but I wish we would because it's so much more professional.
All right, this isn't on here, Matt, but.
Do you have a question?
I was just wondering, um, email notification, letter notification, you have.
Oh, for the person?
The applicants? I would prefer a letter. You could do both if you want to shoot an email out and send a letter. Whatever's easy.
Whichever is easy, but nowadays, most people do everything via email.
That's why I'm doing this.
So, I think email is fine because they're submitting their application via email.
Correct. Some of them hand deliver them. Yeah, that's. I, I don't, I would prefer mail.
Whichever you think is best.
Okay.
Maybe it depends on the situation.
Yeah.
All right. Matt, we met a week or so ago to temporarily boot you and said at this meeting, we would have a discussion on what more permanent options are going forward. That's all we have to answer. All right. So, you have a very odd situation where the county attorney resigned about three weeks before the election, which she is the only candidate on the ballot. So, you're, you're kind of in this weird gap and I'm filling that weird gap for you. But on the time of the election, Erin is, unless there's a huge write-in for somebody else, Erin is going to be elected county attorney on November 5th and then there'll be a canvas after that. Erin's going to have to then give a, another resignation letter essentially or, or state that she will not be accepting the results of the election. And that's when your vacancy will become permanent, so to speak. You have 40 days to appoint a county attorney. And you have to publish on, you know, what you, what you're going to do essentially. You have a meeting to decide. And, and publication has to be no less than four days and no more than 20 days. You're already receiving applicants. I've seen several applications for people applying to be county attorney. I, I believe that you'll need to repost after the election and, and publish again. Because technically, the election will fill the vacancy, so to speak. And if Erin chose, maybe she doesn't like her job and wants to come back, she could, okay? Over the next three weeks. So, it's, it technically won't become vacant till that time.
Until after the election?
Yes. So, if you, I, I wouldn't wait too long though. For, if you wanted to take her, she originally, I believe, resigned on the 12th, which would make the 21st of November, a Thursday, 40 days. That, if, if you wanted to look back from that original, I believe legally you can look back from the date of the canvas after the election. But no matter what, you need to get a county attorney in here sooner rather than later. So, no matter what the legal requirement is, I would be looking at trying to hold some sort of, to publish after the election, a date. You're already receiving applications. And, and basically set a date where the three of you interview candidates or people who, who want to be county attorney. They, there's a provision in the law that does not require someone. Normally in these kind of situations, if, if it was any other elected office, you would have had, had to live in the county 60 days prior to the appointment. The only exception to that is the county attorney. County attorney does not have to live in the county until the day they are appointed. And so, that's something I think that needs to be communicated to the applicants as well as in our publication. And I'll work with Kelly on that language to make sure that they know that the day you guys appoint somebody, they have to be living in Madison County. They have to have residence.
So, the day we appoint them on Monday, they have to?
They have to have a lease or a home on Monday or somewhere to live.
So, there's no grace period like we did with?
No.
Okay.
So, how, what if they, so they apply?
If they're not willing to abide by that, they can't take the job.
But how do they know they won't get the job? And why would they move if they have a company job?
Well, what you can do is indicate who you're intending to make the offer to in public and then make the appointment date after the fact.
So, the campus date would be November 12th. Are you saying you can't leave anything after the campus?
Well, there is a provision that allows somebody to resign prior, so you can publish prior to that. So, the day after the election.
But it's already published.
Yes and no because Erin could still change her mind. She can. If that election, and I don't think she will, but if she hates the place and wants, you know, sometimes people have buyers or more so they want to come back. If she wants to come back, she can if she, if she wins that, or when she wins the election. And so, I think, I will talk to Erin and ask her to, we just need something written saying, I'm not intending to come back after that date. And so, on, on November 6th, you can publish. And again, that can't be more than four days or less than four days and no more than 20. You can hold a meeting in that period of time. You say what the, what the date of that's going to be, that all applications have to be in at that date. And then you'll have interviews and you'll give those individuals the opportunity if they want to have a closed session for their interview or have it open to the public. It's there, they will be open to the public unless they elect to have it closed. Just like any other, you know, interview process. And then, or your other option is to hold an election. It costs money and I don't know if you'll get the same kind of interest as you will an appointment. Being appointed is a lot easier than running, trust me. So.
Plus, if they move, it's a big risk. They would have to move first.
Not necessarily, but, but yes. I mean, if you put your name on the ballot, you're going to have to move. Sometime, if you don't know if you're going to win or not, you may not want them to move. So, the, the appointment process, you'll draw more candidates. And, and, and well, you'd have to look at it. If, if you didn't like any of the candidates, you know, then you'd have to decide. If it, if it's left absent, there's a provision in the law that the chief judge can appoint somebody. But it doesn't necessar, then it gets, it gets really murky. The chief judge can also determine the pay and other things. So, those are things that you wouldn't want to deal with. Okay, Matt, let's get the calendar here. Election's November 5th. If Erin would submit something stating that.
On the 6th.
On the 6th, we could post. You could post on the 6th, yep. And publish. Well, but whatever the, you couldn't publish till the following week because it has, it'd have to be.
That's when he comes out on Wednesday.
Correct. So, you couldn't hold a meeting before the 16th?
But I.
But we could.
But you could.
Put your applications in by, say, November 18th.
I would, I would, I would make the applicant, I mean, just so you're not lending yourselves, I would make the applications due the day before the date.
So, I mean, that's the case, say, you know, we're trying to move a client. Say we get a really good applicant that doesn't live in our county. So, but they're, the applicants are the best one.
You can publicly extend them. Say we would like to put you on the next agenda and we would like to appoint you, but you will have to be a Madison County resident on that date.
Can we give them, because you can't move over, no. Can we legally say you have 30 days to move?
No, you cannot.
Could we do like we did with you?
I'm not, I'm, I'm just a designate, well, I mean, I guess.
Could we temporarily appoint them until they move?
Because you can't expect somebody to move over.
The law says 40 days. Like, I'm in this weird spot where we're not in that 40-day period, so I don't believe so. You can't. I don't believe you can. You have 40 days to appoint somebody. So, you can't, you, you can't have them.
Officially find somebody in late November.
Yeah, they may want them to do this for a week.
Get down here.
But once you get to the 40 days, they have to be appointed.
So, so theoretically, the longest we could drag out a appointment was November 27th. That was the end of the four years.
No, I think the longest you, in my legal opinion, the vacancy would become official on the 12th of November and you'd have 40 days from that date. But again, I wouldn't wait very long.
It doesn't behoove us to wait, does it?
No, I'm just trying to say worse, I'm thinking worst case scenarios. If we don't find an applicant that is good enough or we do find an applicant, but they don't live here. I'm trying to think of all the different scenarios that we have to.
Well, that's why I think that in the publication, we need to explain that you need to move here. What I anticipate will probably happen is somebody will get an apartment and that will bridge the gap for them till they get a permanent resident or they'll have the apartment. The, Brenna Bird did that when she was county attorney in Fremont County. Had an apartment there and also had a home in Guthrie County. So, we know there are creative ways to do it. Lawyers find ways to do this. But at the end of the day, you'll have to make your appointment within 40 days of the 12th. And, and honestly, I just, I don't, you know, you know, I'll toot my horn. I was available. You got lucky that I kind of come in for a few weeks. County attorney's office is an important office, the law firm for the county. You need to get somebody in there sooner rather than later. There's a lot of things like, it's not just criminal prosecution. That's the sexy stuff that people see. But as you know, there's a lot of civil things that happen with the commissions and boards as well as the elected officials. It's good if you can get somebody in here as soon as possible because there's also, there's also a learning curve if you've never served as county attorney.
No, Matt, when you were here, we never had a full jail because you've got people sent to prison or rehabilitation. It would not be good for taxpayers if we didn't have a county attorney because as the jail, then we'd have to ship people out because we're full. Is that a true statement? It's important that you.
Well, we're legally required to have one.
I know, but it, it, it is so much of tax savings because he kept everything so moving quickly.
There is no way to do a 2080.
If you cannot find somebody, the process is not laid out specifically in the code. But there are counties, you see this in smaller counties like Taylor and Ringgold County. There wasn't even a lawyer, I think, that lived in one of the counties. I mean, didn't, didn't even have a lawyer of any kind. And they were, they did a 2080 agreement. There are other counties that are doing 2080 agreements. They're pretty much in southern Iowa, kind of on the border of Iowa, Missouri. That could be an option with, you know, a, a surrounding county potentially if you can't find somebody. But I, I will say you are getting applicants. I haven't looked at the applications in depth, so I don't know what their qualifications are.
I mean, Earl, are there two or more than two?
I don't know, probably three or four.
Okay, all right. Well, you're just in the position.
Yeah, and you'll be publishing again and you're going to have, you know, several other weeks. I think even after the election, there may be people, don't, it's not me. Okay, I'm, I'm not moving Madison County. My, my reason for leaving is still the same, it's a family reason and so. But, but there could be other people who may have some reasons that they, that they apply. So, I think you'll see more applications as you get closer to the date in which you will pick to do interviews. And, and, you know, and people are going to have, have more time to consider that. Thinking about interviewing.
Thinking about interviews.
So what?
People more qualified than the three of us to participate in this interview.
You are the three people who pick.
I know.
Can somebody sit in? I'm not, I've never really been to a lawyer, so I can, can somebody sit in?
I mean, I would think sheriff might be helpful. Some, I don't know.
I, I think that you can invite other people in with the approval of the applicant.
But not if it's a closed session?
With the approval of the applicant.
Okay, so if the applicant...
Because they're the ones who'd be asking for a closed session.
Okay.
I mean, to me, Jason would be better able to speak to them as far as the criminal side of things than either of the three of us.
I mean, you can get advice from, from others. If your HR rep, you'd want him, you know...
We could also send...
You want Kelly there too?
We could also send the, who we narrow it down to. If we have the ability to narrow it down to other people, the resident of other people, so guidance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I, I wouldn't be sharing any of their resumes or anything like that. I mean, I guess it'd be a public, the resume could be a public record. Uh, but it could also not be. There are some exceptions in the open records law.
Could we run them by you when we narrow it down?
I proba, I will, I probably will not be here.
Okay. So just in a...
Not probably, I won't.
You won't? So just in a nutshell, we, we have to publish it, we're going to publish it on the 12th. Is that what I'm understanding?
On the 6th.
The 6th?
Well, you won't be able to publish. You can post on the 6th.
We can post on the 6th, but publish on the 12th because that's the 6th is the one you say.
Yes.
So publish on the 12th and then can we say applicants have to be due by November 14th?
You can say whenever you want. But you, you, you will need to pick a date for a, a meeting and I don't, you know, I think you could, you're having a special meeting on the 29th. And you can start talking about that.
I'm just trying to figure out...
I guess, you know, I, again, I mean, it's just, it's such a weird position to be in because the county attorney resigned three weeks before the election. There's really not a lot of guidance in, in the code on this. I'm making a few assumptions.
Because if we post on the, if we publish it on the 12th...
I think you, I think you'll want to have a special meeting on the 6th to determine the date, to direct publication.
Why don't we just do that on, on November 29th?
Because it, because it's kind of weird, the vacancy hasn't occurred. I, I, I know, but I mean, I'm, the lawyer in me says, like, you can't, I mean, what if Erin were to decide to take the left? It is, you, you can't do it legally.
What if somebody wanted a write-in? It won't happen.
If, if a write-in won, yeah, when, you know, I mean, that's, I, I doubt that's going to happen. Crazy things happen in politics. I mean, I, I, if we were, I mean, I'm 99% sure how this is going to go, but legally, I think you should probably have a special meeting on the 6th to direct publication, to accept the, the filing or resignation of the county attorney. You know, do it officially, publicly, that she is not going to take office. And, um, and then, and then direct that to be published on the 12th. Have your meeting date determined at that time. I mean, I think you just do all of it on that day. And you, if you can't all be here in person, you can do it over the phone. You can have a telephonic meeting. I mean, we're discussing this now, so you, you kind of have an idea of what all the substance will be. And really, it'll just be a matter of picking dates. I mean, that's really, you're just going to pick a date for publication, pick a date for your meeting, and pick a date to have resumes in by.
So if we pick a date, so it's published on the 12th, it's a Tuesday. And then four day, four business days later goes to the 18th. The 19th is a Tuesday. We could have interviews on the 19th, which is, you know, require the resumes to be received by Monday, the 18th. Have interviews on November 19th.
You probably want to review the resumes before you schedule them. They may, they may not be able to meet?
No, 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 no. Heather's right. You need to set a date for receiving resumes and the meeting.
Right.
They'll know about that in the publication. So if they, you know, you're going to set in the pub, publication when you're going to do, uh...
Interviews.
Interviews and then when you'll have a hearing to, to decide who you're going to hire or whether you do it as an election.
I'm just trying, I'm thinking of the, the shortest timeline.
No, I get that, I get that.
And then we can certainly discuss it.
You, you'll certainly want to be efficient in the process, but you don't want to just ram it through.
No, but, um, so that would be the shortest timeline. We can certainly extend it out because we have through December or whatever that date is for the 40 days. But like you said, to do it sooner rather than later.
You can always continue. You can set a hearing date and if you don't feel that you have the right thing, you could continue that hearing date.
You can take a hearing date for November 26th, the regular meeting date.
You could.
So the shortest timeline would be resumes by November 18th. We set interviews for November 19th, which is a Tuesday, it's an off. Oh wait, no, that's our regular.
Yep.
No, 12th on the 26th are our regulars.
So you could...
So the 19th would be for interviews and then on the 26th, we can do the appointment.
You could, but in, as, as we, correct. As we talked about, you may not get the person to be a resident at, at times. So you can continue that, you, you could have it set all like that. You can indicate to the individual, you can't take action. You can't take official action, but you can indicate, uh, you can meet at your, your, your interview date and say, this is who we like and that we will, and you can make an offer, so to speak, and, and then make the appointment official on the 26th. If they say, well, I can't get an apartment that quick, you can continue it. We've got to make the appointment within 40 days.
So we could indicate to the applicant, if we have an applicant, say, you're our first choice. They intend to appoint you. However, we have to, we can't appoint you any later than this date. Can you move by that date?
And they could just move by getting an apartment or living with someone?
Correct. They just need to declare that they need to find a place where they sleep 50% plus one at a time and, um, move their, their voting records to Madison County.
And how long?
Declare that as their residence.
So they could do that in a couple of days?
They could do that in an hour. I mean, if they had everything lined up, it would, it mean, it wouldn't be hard. Maybe they'll be living near your basement, Diana, I don't know.
They could.
But if they have family or children, that's going to be...
I know, it'd take me four years.
Yeah. Again, the, that's going to be their problem. They, they're applying for the job.
Yeah, and they know that.
They're being, being given notice that they have to live here on the day of the appointment. If they're smart and you want to select a smart person, they're already putting together a plan in their minds on how they would make that happen.
And they're already looking for a place.
Maybe, maybe, but they, but again, they'll have a plan in their mind on how they would make that happen.
Is that, do they have to disclose that plan to us or...
No, they'll just have to declare on the day, on the day of your appointment, they'll have to tell you where they're living and where they're, you know, they'll have to register to vote.
Alright, well, the calendar seems to work. And technically, the interviews could happen anytime, the weekend, the 18th.
True.
They can.
And they might have to, maybe they will, they'll come soon, but that's true.
Well, you'll just, I, I think you'll set them and they'll need to be there on that date.
I think that's what we do.
If you get a bunch of people who tell you that, that won't work, I suppose you can set another date, but, um...
Well, let's hope we have that problem, that we have multiple...
Hope so.
Yes, well, we have several applicants already, which is good.
Okay.
So we talk in the, the 2080 agreements, um, that sheriff, county attorneys are Bedford or Taylor, the real small counties that have like less than 3,000 people. Because I sent on boards of them and it is where they're, and they talk about it all the time.
Well, that's, that's a worst-case scenario.
It's a worse case.
But I, I want to make sure we know all the scenarios so we can, you know.
That's the worst case scenario.
Alright, everybody clearing the dates and what needs to be done?
No, but Michelle is. Well, that's, I guess it's...
Michelle, Kelly and Matt.
Well, that's my follow-up question is, who generates the resolutions? We're going to be using on the 6th. Is it a CA, HR, or SBB?
Oh, we'll all work on them.
We'll all work on them.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, perfect, alright, thank you. 24 priorities, courthouse exterior projects. Wasn't that going to be changed to courthouse warranty issues?
Oh, when we got them today, um, whatever. So it changed that one for warranty issues.
Hey...
He sent them to us already? Did he know all this from...
No, he sent to Michelle. No, he hasn't.
Have you got all those warranties?
He's still working on it.
He's working on a couple of them.
That was his update, was he's working on it.
Okay.
He has not got it, it's still on his radar. I thought that'd be important for you guys to know, but they're staying in touch.
Count plan revision, we're having a special meeting on the 29th to hopefully finalize that hearing. In ordinance review, we'll follow, correct.
Yes, do we, I did reach out to the consultant asking for a quote. I haven't gotten it back yet. I'm assuming he'll probably work on that after he finishes his updates to the company. So that's the only thing that's outstanding right now.
Alright, anything else?
Yes, on the, um, ordinances, are you aware of all the campers that are everywhere? And the permanent, like, living?
I've, I've seen them. I don't know, I don't know if they're permanent. We have a few on my side of the county, but I don't, I expect once it gets cold, we'll be leaving because those things are insulated for, you know, damn long. And gas barrels, right next to it. Propane tanks. I don't know if we have any prohibitions in our ordinances against that, do you?
I mean, the previous attorneys have told me that, that what we have currently is not a problem. Send letters of violation in sight.
So that is something that's...
Okay, if there's nothing else, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Diana, is there a second? Second, we have, any further discussion? If not, I'll be ready to keep saying aye.
Aye.